Good evening, everyone. Calling the June 10th Norfolk School Committee Meeting to order. I will begin this meeting as I begin all meetings by reading our mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Can I have a roll call, please?
Lauren Vivas.
Grace Lockhead.
Madora Champagne.
Lisa Sheldon.
Amy Malardy.
Victoria Saldana.
Marion Goodman.
Do you have any public comment tonight? Seeing none, moving to correspondence. In your packet, you will see that we received two letters from Mrs. Trumburt. One for the Norfolk Teachers Association expressing their intent to enter negotiations with the school committee to bargain a successor agreement to the 2023-2026 Teacher Collective Bargaining Agreement. And then another to bargain an initial collective bargaining agreement for the newly-formed paraprofessional unit of the NTA. And then on the back, you will just see the acknowledgements I sent back. The paraprofessionals will like to begin in September, and the teachers in the December, January timeframe. And later in the agenda, we will appoint the school committee members to serve on those Moving on to the chair report. Tonight, we have the distinct honor of recognizing five incredible members of our school community who are retiring at the end of this school year. A beloved pre-K teacher, an exceptional 6th grade teacher, an inspiring art teacher, and two dedicated and respected paraprofessionals. Each of them has made a lasting impact on the lives of our students, families, and colleagues. As a school committee, we are deeply grateful for their years of service, their commitment to education, and the kindness and care they've shown every day. This evening, we're going to take a moment to reflect on their contributions and celebrate the legacies they leave behind. Each committee member will now share a brief message of thanks honoring one of these individuals. I will start with Mrs. Melick. It is with immense appreciation and a touch of bitter sweetness that we recognize Laura Ellen Gilde-Melick, a cherished member of our Norfolk Public Schools family, as she embarks on her next chapter. Laura has dedicated over 25 years to our district in various vital educational roles. From her foundational work as a special education teacher, an Orton-Gillingham certified tutor and a language-based teacher, to her leadership as a special education team chairperson evaluator, Laura's impact has been profound. In her final beloved role as an art teacher at Freeman Kennedy, her cherished pottery creations, art Smithsonian exhibits, and amazing art projects will be deeply missed. Laura dedicated countless hours to teaching art skills across grades 3 through 6, enriching our school by bringing in artists for murals and mosaic products, and beautifully organizing art displays for school art shows. She actively participated in committees like Nest and Sitebase, mentored countless new staff members, and consistently sought professional growth, enthusiastically sharing her expertise. Laura's students have flourished under her energetic, creative, and confident teaching style, making progress and reaching their artistic potential through her excellent organization and dedication. We know Laura will now have more time at her retirement home in Webster, New Hampshire with her loving husband George, and more time to visit her three children in Colorado, Drew, Owen, and Maslin, continue to travel across the world and cherish moments with her extended family and friends. We thank Laura for her enduring dedication and wish her a retirement filled with joy, adventure, and cherished time with loved ones.
Which is very heavy, so...
Oh, boy.
Sweet. Oh, thank you. Oh, it's beautiful. Thank you so much. Very happy. Thank you.
That's true. We don't exactly match our agenda, but we're just going to roll with it. So, here we go. Ellen Versprill has been an integral part of early childhood education in Norfolk for many years. Her impressive career began in Norfolk in 1988 until 1992. And after spending a period of time raising her family, she enthusiastically resumed her teaching career in 2014, jumping right back in where she left off: in preschool. Ellen displays a genuine kindness like no other. If you ask anyone who knows her, they will wholeheartedly agree. She consistently spreads her kindness to others and teaches by powerful example. It is no wonder that she always has a classroom full of kind preschoolers. They have all benefited immensely from her direct and incidental teaching, as have her colleagues. Ellen's inherent kindness is beautifully complimented by her unwavering positivity. She possesses a remarkable ability to find the silver lining in any situation, approaching even the most challenging circumstances with an optimistic outlook. And let's not forget her warm smile and positive reassuring words: a genuine source of comfort to countless children and colleagues. Norfolk Public Schools has been incredibly fortunate to have Ellen nurture our preschoolers in the vital skills of sharing, independence, and making a positive impact. Her deep passion for the power of play in childhood learning, a sentiment beautifully echoed by Fred Rogers' quote, "Play is really the work of childhood," will continue to inspire us. As we move forward, we will proudly carry on her legacy by prioritizing play-based learning for our children, a value she so strongly championed. We are truly grateful for the profound lessons she has taught us and for her enduring preschool legacy.
Cheryl, that means you have to hold yours.
So, again, out of order, but Mrs. McNeely. Mrs. McNeely has been a classroom teacher in the Norfolk Public Schools for the past 18 years, most of which has been in the 6th grade. Cheryl has shown a deep commitment to her students and colleagues throughout her career. She has mentored fellow teachers, offering guidance, support, and encouragement to help them grow. As an educator, Cheryl has been deeply committed to her students' success. She created engaging, thoughtful lessons that inspired a love of learning, always striving to meet the goals, meet the needs of each student. Her ability to connect with students and foster their academic and personal growth has made her a respected and beloved teacher. Cheryl has been an essential member of the ELA Committee where she has contributed valuable insights and helped develop meaningful curriculum improvements. Her passion for education extends beyond the classroom as she consistently creates and shares instructional units with their team, ensuring that all students benefit from high-quality learning experiences. In addition to her work in the classroom and on committees, Cheryl took on a leadership role as vice president of the NTA. Cheryl's hard work, dedication, leadership, and generosity, along with her time and experience -- expertise, have made a difference in the lives of many. Cheryl looks forward to spending more time with her family, especially being grandma extraordinaire. We wish Cheryl the very best of luck and much happiness in this next chapter of her life.
Two paraprofessionals weren't going to be here tonight.
All right. So, we're going to talk about Michelle Diamond. Although Michelle Diamond is retiring as a special education assistant from the H. Olive Day School, the presence of her fiery spark will always remain. For 24 years, Michelle's love, selflessness, and care for the children of HOD were boundless. Michelle was a dedicated and committed instructional assistant who worked tirelessly with all students despite barriers, challenges, or needs. Michelle was always available to help. She was kind and engaging to everyone. Michelle's unique style, sense of humor, and colorful flair always made those around her smile. Michelle is looking forward to her days being filled with the laughter of her grandson Jack digging in her beautiful garden, adventures with her husband David, and time with her family. We wish Michelle the best of luck and much happiness in this next chapter of her life.
Michelle and Deborah Barrett were not able to be with us tonight, so I will bring their heavy plants to them tomorrow.
Deborah Barrett. For 28 wonderful years, Deborah Barrett, an ABA Special Education Assistant, has been the dedicated heart and hands of our special education and preschool programs at the H. Olive Day School. Her unwavering commitment, tireless hard-work ethic, and student-centered approach have left an indelible mark on countless young lives in the district. Deb touched so many young lives, providing consistent guidance, support, instruction, and comfort to them. Her energetic spirit and ever-present smile brightened every classroom she entered. Deb possessed a remarkable gift for patiently and gently guiding our youngest learners to unlock their full learning potential and laying down a strong foundation while instilling a love of learning from their very first school experiences. We wish Deb the best of luck and much happiness in this next chapter of her life.
Thank you, all. You will be missed.
Thank you for coming tonight and for all that you've done for the students in Norfolk. It's been a pleasure working with all three of you and with Michelle and Deb over the past several years. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, we have some...
And don't feel you have to stay. I know you have children that will be waiting for you first thing tomorrow, and if you need help with plants, I can have them bring them to your classrooms tomorrow.
Moving on, we have some gifts to approve tonight. We have two gifts from the Norfolk PTO, one in the amount of $1,403.05, and that is for the Grade 2 alumni t-shirts my son is proudly wearing with the bird, HOD alum. They were for the clapout. Then another one from the Norfolk PTO for $400 for the box preschool -- it's before-school gym session, session 2. And then from the student lost book account, $26 for lost books from Freeman Kennedy, for a total of $1,829.05. Looking for a motion to accept the gifts as stated.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion?
Just thank you.
Thank you very much, as always.
Except for the lost books. Having paid that in the past.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, for the superintendent evaluation process. We've all done this last year, so it's the same process. We'll be sending out the same form as our school committee meeting in August is on the 20th. Would it be feasible for everyone to get me back their evaluations by August 6th? And I will compile them, combine them, and do a formal write-up.
August 6th. Got it. Sure.
And we'll use the same state form as last year.
Send it out to everybody. Perfect. Last year, so you'll have it, and you can return it to yourself.
And then later on in the agenda, you can review.
Yep. Progress.
Progress. Perfect. Okay, and then for the school committee retreat, I had some dates I wanted to run by people in late August. Would August 21st or 22nd work for people? You don't have to let me know now, but if you could look at calendars.
When they said for that, we were thinking like an afternoon or like a few hours, like three hours.
Late afternoon, early evening.
I'll be away that week.
Okay. That's fine, so I'll look at another date.
I'll turn my phone back.
Can move to maybe like the first week of school then.
Okay.
Okay. I will send out new dates.
Yeah, I think everybody will ship you back from vacation on school's end.
Right. Okay.
There's no camp coverage that week.
Yes, exactly. And then the next item on the agenda is to appoint school committee members to serve on the negotiating teams. I think we should at least appoint the paraprofessionals to the negotiating team because they do want to start in September. So, I think it would be great if we were...
Can we go back? Those are kind of the time commitments and like schedule. I guess the schedule hasn't -- it's not out there because we're going to have an initial meeting to kind of...
Yeah. So, we would need two members to serve on each of the negotiating teams. The paraprofessionals would like to begin negotiations in early fall, so probably September. We'd set an initial date, and at the initial date, we'll develop ground rules. And typically, we schedule out the next three negotiation sessions. Typically, they're two hours, so from 5:00 to 7:00. And because this is an initial contract, we will be developing language for multiple things. I do expect that it will go for several months. So, I would anticipate generally, we meet every other week so that there's time for both sides to review proposals and consider proposals. So, I would imagine probably planned September, at least through December, on a biweekly commitment, two hours. And then the teachers would like to begin probably typically in January, and it would be the same time commitment. Probably last time was January through about June.
I have to kind of throw my hat into one of them. I'll go for the paraprofessional.
And they had sent an email just suggesting initial dates for initial meetings of September 15th, 17th, or 18th. Sorry, what was that? 15th, 17th, or 18th. You don't have to let me know now, just so you know that those are potential dates. Yes. Does anyone else have any interest on...
I mean, I could throw my hat in for that as well.
Have any other plans or thoughts?
No, and if we're going to vote both tonight, I'm happy to serve on the teachers.
We're going to need a second person for the teacher negotiations, and I know, Grace, because you've got two committees that you're attending, we had talked about that at the last meeting. So, we should probably make sure we have two people for both before we vote.
Right. I'm not available to volunteer for the teachers' negotiation committee this year. And I think from the standpoint of promoting some turnover in the process and longevity for other board members, I am thinking the only one that's ever done it. So, I think it's rationally time for some other folks to participate in that process.
Okay.
And they just have a lot going on.
Sure. That makes sense.
And I don't, I mean, it goes against my being, but I feel like five meetings a month with two kids in hockey and swim, and I just don't think I can handle that. Right? Or maybe said another way, I think if I committed to it, I would have given you a full when I got home.
We like happy school committee measures.
So, Madora, is the, sorry, just to rephrase your position, is that you can't do the teacher or you can't do either of them?
I guess I have a question. The chair has historically participated in everything, so we have two people. Are you intending to participate in each of them as well? I had assumed that, so...
We talked about, I had talked about with Ingrid, definitely on the teachers. Since we've never had para, I can, I'm happy to. If two people volunteered, I don't have to. I'm not the ruler by any means, but I'm happy to participate in both if you think...
Sure, but I mean, you're the sort of elected representative of the school committee that's negotiating with us. So, I just, I mean, it's just been, I'm just framing out who's doing what so that I have a better understanding of it. I could probably participate in the paraprofessionals. I have not as many meetings.
I'm not pressuring you. I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah, I know. It's just I don't, we are in a period of transition in my household, and so knowing what my availability will look like in September is challenging.
Sure.
And I would not want to not be able to participate fully. Was that a double negative? I would not want to commit to it and...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Not be able to hold up my end of it.
I'm willing to do both. I don't know if the two of you have a preference.
We're going to duel for this?
So, what do we have, what do we have left in terms of gaps, positions?
We need a second person to do the teacher contract negotiations.
Yeah, so Lisa's going to do both. I'm deemed for the paraprofessional. We need a second person for the teachers' negotiating committee.
Oh, I see. So, you want to flip for it?
No.
Because I have a busy household as well.
Yeah, I do.
And many, many commitments. So, we're all in the same boat on, as far as that aspect goes.
Do, is there like a possibility for Peter and I to discuss this out outside of...
Yeah, we could vote in August if the two of you want to discuss.
Okay.
Based on schedules, which...
Yeah, and I have other people, obviously. You have people in your household you need to consult and discuss things. So, I don't know if we can make like rash, quick decisions that impact, you know, six months of...
Yeah. So, we will table the appointing the school committee members to serve on the negotiating teams. We're obviously planning to move forward in good faith. It's just deciding on who will be there. I, with the vote of the committee eventual vote, will be happy to attend both sessions. So, it's deciding who will join me. Okay. Is it for me?
All right. So, we have several people here tonight presenting, so we're going to see if we can maybe shift the order, if that's okay with everybody. Maybe we'll start with Marion with the budget update, and I'll save the school highlights until our committees have presented, if that's okay.
So, I'll be brief. I know you have a really long meeting ahead of you, and this is not really much of a surprise to you, same format as you've seen. Here's our total approved budget of $15,565,080 and the distribution of it. On the next slide, I will tell you that this amount went up by $125,000. That includes the SPED stabilization funding that was allocated in this year. So, now you're at $15,859,169. As we look at each individual category, I'm primarily going to go through the comments. You can read the numbers. You can see what's red. They're bright red, so, but it's not going to end that way. So, positive ending. Anyway, so, administration over expended by nine grand roughly. We anticipate reclassifying administrative expenses to the state shelter grant. That's the $104 a day that we're getting from emergency assistance for administrative services that are related to homeless transportation and grant management. So, that will cover that deficit. On the next slide, we, similarly, that's kind of going to be my story tonight. We just got this money in earlier this week, or last week, so that kind of is where we're landing. Some of these bullets are similar to the ones you've seen in the first three quarters, but the last two add on the two new EL paras. Those will also be reclassified to the shelter grant, and there will be additional instructional expenses reclassified, such as costs for EL teachers, cost for other EL student expenses that would have been occurred. And so, we'll cover that as well with the shelter money that we've received. On the next slide, you'll see the largest negative balance of $172,000 in deficit. This is primarily due to school of origin transportation. We've had a lot of families either moving out of the shelter and choosing to come back into the Norfolk Public Schools as per law, or moving or remaining.
Moving into the shelter and remaining in their home districts, so never attending Norfolk schools, and we still are transporting back to there.
So, we still have to transport that. Good news is that the amount that we have paid to date is that $44,532 that you see up there. That's invoices repaid as of the end of May. We anticipate that number's going to go up. It will be 100% reimbursed from the Department of Ed, probably not till the end of August, but those funds will be reclassified into a grant. We'll set up a receivable, and it won't hit our bottom line. 100% reimbursement coming soon. And then any other transportation expenses related, like the additional bus that we purchased this year, those costs will also be reclassified to the $104 a day. So, there's really two sources of funding, the $104 a day, which is one source, and the school of origin money, which is 100% on a reimbursement basis, based on the invoices that we've actually paid for that transportation. On the next slide, you see operations and maintenance. You also have a memo in your packet asking to transfer $116,000 out of this category to the 9,000 series for programs with other districts. And so, you'll see that in the two slides. So, fixed charges hasn't changed, small positive balance there, and programs with other districts overdrawn by $115,000 and change. Again, proposed transfer from operations to cover this. It's primarily because there were additional students outplaced this year and some costs that were higher than we had originally budgeted. This is where we allocated the $125,000 from the stabilization fund. So, year-end deficit is $170,000. Projected deficit is $170,393, but again, the $104 a day is going to offset this amount, and you'll see it on the next slide, which this money came in, the emergency assistance fund, that $104 came in, $207,157 came in on June 4th. And so, they, whatever we don't use in this current fiscal year, we can roll forward, but just offsetting the $170,000 deficit leaves us a final estimated year-end balance of roughly $37,000. So, anything I don't need to use to offset a deficit would carry forward into next year of the emergency money would carry forward into next year. On the revolving side, I won't go through each line, but you can see that revolving funds are specified for the purpose for which we are raising money for. Balance there is $795,000. Things like school lunch, SAC, those are self-supporting programs, and other costs where fees are charged, or programs where fees are charged. On the grant side, our total grants for the current fiscal year, right now, unexpended balance is at $104,500. I expect with the last payroll that we're posting probably tomorrow, hopefully, that even though it's not paid out till the end of the week or later, the, those grant balances will be drawn down in full. There are a couple of journal entries that need to be made. You'll see that as well. And then you have your balances in your special ed circuit breaker account, which we anticipate having a fourth quarter payment, as well as the balance in the stabilization fund, which shows $125,000 used, some of which of that balance is appropriate, is anticipated to be used next year. And finally, a gift account summary has, the gift account has about $37,000 as of the end of May. Happy to answer any questions. I know that was pretty quick, but it's where you are.
Better news than a month ago when we weren't sure what we were getting for the reimbursement. So, we're not projecting a deficit, which we were up until probably three weeks ago. So, that's good.
That was, that was the March, the money that just came in on June 2nd was their end-of-March payment. Okay. So, the next payment will come in in August. Great. Thank you all so much. Have a good night.
Next is a very quick one. The Norfolk CPAC is looking for approval of their fundraiser, their annual CPAC trunk or treat, with a proposed date of October 24th. They need to get this approved by the committee so that they can advertise and start planning for it. So, looking for a motion to approve the CPAC trunk or treat.
So moved. It's already been 11 years. Wow.
Second.
Any further discussion? Lauren and I were talking about potentially doing a trunk, if anyone would like to join us. Could be fun. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we're going to move forward with the two curriculum committees that have been working over the course of this year. First, we have the technology steering committee, and then we have the math curriculum committee to present their proposals. Trish Kelly is our director of technology. So, Trish, I'm going to let you start out by talking a little bit about the tech steering committee, and then I'll walk through some of the goals.
Okay. So, I'm happy to be here tonight, seeing everybody again, and it's so amazing to have this crowd that is never here. Before I begin, Ingrid and I are going to speak, as she just said, about the tech steering committee, but before I begin, I just want to bring you up to speed on what the technology team does for Norfolk Public Schools. Currently, there are three members of the technology team, Raphael Sardi, Mark Peasey, and myself, and we work very closely with Robin Tousere, who's the tech integration specialist for the district. Raphael and Mark handle the network management, configuration, design, installation, and help desk support. In addition to that, the three of us, like I said, support Robin Tousere in multiple ways, as she's the tech integration specialist, and my plan is to have Robin here in October with some of her students who have done some amazing STEM projects this year in engineering and 3D print and design. So, hopefully, she'll be able to make the meeting in October. In addition to what Raphael and Mark... In addition to what Raphael and Mark do for the network, the three of us together work daily on a wide variety of systems throughout the district, security and surveillance systems. This would include all of our security cameras, our key Forbes, our Raptor visitor management system, which are all critical for maintaining a safe school environment. We service all the servers, the switches, the APs, which are the backbone of our district networks. We're responsible for every copier and printer in the district, every single phone, the PA system in both buildings. We also are responsible and manage approximately thirty software programs, any of the programs from food services, the new program Mosaic, to Vicky's HMH ELA program, to the new math program that's coming in, SIS, which is a student information system. We handle all of those programs as well as all audio visual equipment from microphones to soundboards to tech setups for recorder concerts and author days and all those good things that happen here in the district. And our help desk usually runs between seven hundred and eight hundred tickets in the ten month period that we're in school. So although we're a team of three, we are very dedicated, but throughout all of this, we are continuously trying to promote a balance of active screen time versus passive screen time for all of our students and our staff, which brings me to the work that we did this year with the technology steering committee. Every five years, we convene a technology steering committee. This year, it began in the fall of '24. It will continue through June of '26. There are currently sixteen members on the committee, very dedicated members. We have parents and guardians. We have admins from both buildings. We have gen ed teachers. We have special ed teachers. We had mental health staff and we had members, obviously, of the tech team. Each month, we came together, we read, we reviewed, we discussed research from leading experts in technology in the K-12 arena. In the packet we provided you, we had four really strong goals to work towards as well as an updated vision statement from the technology. We sent out the survey to parents, guardians, and staff on a wide variety issues and taking that feedback back, we gathered some really great ideas, information that we're going to put together in formulating the structure of the goals. The one goal that we did start with was the guiding around screen time and that's in your packet and that's one goal that we got completed and we can, Ingrid will address that in just a minute. And the other piece that we completed this year was the vision statement. The vision statement did not require a lot. The parents, the guardians, and the staff all really liked the vision statement that we had in place. However, they suggested a few tweaks. We took that into consideration and we put that through the new vision statement. So Ingrid, do you want to?
Sure, I can talk about the goals. So originally, we had hoped to launch the tech steering committee in 2023, '24 school year. We did delay it a year because we were in the process of the ELA review. We had multiple committees and it was hard to get a robust committee together. So we delayed it a year. We began this fall. The four primary goals we had, one was to review research and develop a clear definition for screen time, what that means in schools. As you know, most curriculum, new curriculum is technology-based, so we really wanted to define what active screen time meant to students versus passive screen time. So to develop a clear definition as well as guidelines based on the research and grounded in curriculum instruction, what would make sense for our students. The second goal was to look at the new math digital literacy and computer learning standards, do a gap analysis, evaluate our curriculum, and determine where we might need to make additions or changes, given that the last year we reduced a technology integration teacher and the model looks different. So we really needed to take a second look at curriculum. A third goal for the committee was to evaluate the effectiveness of all our current communication tools. We use a wide range of different applications to communicate with parents as well as our newsletters, our evening workshops, things like that. So to look at from both the parent and teacher perspective, what's the most effective way to get information out and to develop a comprehensive communication plan. And then the last was also to look at current technology policies. So obviously, technology changes faster than any of us can keep up with. We are all trying to figure out what the advent of AI means to teaching and learning. And so to look at the research around AI and develop a district policy around the implementation of AI in the Norfolk Schools. So we had four goals. We really focused the first year on gathering data around communication, gathering feedback from parents and stakeholders, as well as our teaching staff, and developing the guidelines for screen time, as well as, Trish mentioned, adjusting the vision statement. If you see the second page in your packet, these are the guidelines that after the review of the research and looking at the results and analysis from both surveys, these are the proposed guidelines for technology. Again, we have to think about this from a balanced perspective. It is very, very clear from the research literature that there are there are strong concerns about the impact on students' mental health and cognitive development of the excessive use of screen time. So we wanted to really look at how we're using technology and we decided that our guidelines would be around the intentional use of technology to promote active learning. So we define the difference between active and passive screen time. Passive screen time obviously is really when students are watching or consuming information from from laptops, phones, other devices where they're not actively engaged with the content. That kind of screen time where they're watching and consuming without any kind of interaction does have significant impacts on the development of social skills, anxiety, depression, lots of other things. Active screen time is more about collaborative projects where students are interacting with the screen, taking an active role, coding, 3D design, music creation, they're generating product. So we define the difference between the two. Our guidelines are really around intentional use of technology. So from a curriculum instruction lens, we're asking people to consider before we go to technology as a resource or a tool, what is the learning goal? Can it be met without a device? Or is there clear evidence that in that technology enhances learning in this core subject area? And some considerations are around technology can sometimes personalize learning, customize it based on an individual child's learning profile and needs. Sometime it can make observable things that kids couldn't normally see when we're doing actually the fourth grade extravaganza that they just did, learning about states, being able to see state monuments or do virtual tours of buildings. Those are things they couldn't otherwise access. Also for interventions and supports, when students are using technology to sort of support accessibility, maybe we're modifying the the reading level of a passage so that it's accessible to students at differently reading levels. There are times that technology is used for review and practice of skills. Within that, we are recommending guidelines for independent practice. So when students are working independently, whether it's with a program like Lexia or Reflex Math for practicing skills, we're recommending a maximum of ten minutes a day at the lower grades, K to two, and a maximum of fifteen minutes to twenty minutes a day for the grades three to six. Also recommending screen-free experiences be part of the school day. So screen-free zones in the cafeteria or recess and replacing screens with active learning or during recess, things like board games, drawing, pictures, puzzles, other kinds of tools that are available. The technology vision statement, again, as Trish said, and the feedback from both parents and teachers was fairly strong. Most people liked, I think it was eighty percent, eighty-five percent of parents liked the current vision statement, a little bit lower for teachers, about seventy-eight percent. But when we looked at the comments and feedback, the thing that people most felt was missing was the importance of teaching responsible digital citizenship. And that was missing from the prior statement, so we've added that. So you can see the current statement, Norfolk Public Schools inspire, engage, and empower learners to actively use technology resources to question, collaborate, and extend their learning beyond the classroom walls. Through inquiry, analysis, creating, and sharing, students cultivate the skills necessary to thrive as digital, as responsible digital citizens in a connected global environment. So that was the revised statement based on the feedback again from both teachers and parent guardians. And then on the back, you see just some guidelines, things for people to think about in terms of purposeful use of technology, why it matters. Again, excessive screen time can pose several risks to students' well-being, affecting their physical health, mental health, and overall development, the importance of hands-on experiences, play, creative activities. And then there's some additional guidelines for for teachers to consider. So we wanted to share that with the committee tonight. We'll be sharing it back with our our teachers and staff in the fall, maybe making some final revisions, but wanted to keep you up in the loop. We will continue to work the work of this tech steering committee next year to really finalize our communication plan as well as our curriculum. And we expect by the end of June, 2026, to have a draft policy for AI. So Trish, I don't know if I forgot anything, but if we have any questions or thoughts from the committee, happy to respond.
Anyone have any thoughts?
It's all very clear and intentional and good quality, so.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. I would just want to express our appreciation to the members of the committee because we did between every tech meeting, we sent out articles. Some of them were lengthy for people to read. Again, we were looking at the literature on students, child, children's development, mental health. We read from Children's Hospital, from Common Sense Media, and people did a lot of outside work. And we were so pleased to have parents join the committee. They brought a great perspective. So it was a great committee to work with and we look forward to working forward.
Thank you so much. I think this is so well done and so important. We live in such a technological world. It changes constantly. Some of these tools can be so great to help children in their learning. Some of them can take them down a wrong path. And I think you just addressed all the questions out there and really are thinking about it from the lens of a well-being of a student, using technology, one appropriate to help them learn, but also setting the appropriate guardrails. So I think this was excellent and I thank you and the committee.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And stay tuned because we have some committees, people that have got together and we're working with Dot Pearl. And we are going to be able to bring some more speakers in early in September for families.
That's great.
Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trish. Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to go a little bit out of order and we're going to have the math committee. So we're trying to get everybody who has other commitments out, so you don't have to say. So Vicky, I'll turn it to you and the math committee.
So thank you very much. So we're very excited to bring forth to you tonight our recommendation for new math program. As you can see, most of our math committee has graciously joined us tonight to kind of support the process and to offer some insights into the math program, here to answer questions. We also behind you provided you with some sample materials if after the meeting you wanted to kind of take a look or feel free to reach back and take a look now if you'd like there's some teacher material, guides, as well as some student workbooks, so you can kind of see what the the math program looks like in print. So I just wanted to give you a brief overview of our district's math program adoption process and share information about the curriculum we have selected. This, I have to say, this has been a thoughtful collaborative effort involving teachers, administrations, instructional leaders, and all guided by the goal of selecting a high-quality and structural material that aligns with our standards, supporting student learning and promote equitable outcomes across all grade levels. I'll go through the steps we have taken. Some of it I already shared with you a couple of meetings ago, so I'll go through the first part a little bit quicker. But if you have questions, please feel free to let me know and I'll pause. So one of the first things as a committee, and I've shared with you before, we did was we established a vision of mathematics for our district. And this vision kind of helped us guide through the process. Basically says that the Norfolk Public Schools are committed to developing all students' mathematical understanding by creating equitable, relevant, and engaging learning experience. Students will learn to become lifelong problem solvers who sustain a growth mindset, collaborate, and effectively apply and communicate their thinking in a variety of ways. Our students will have access to high-quality instruction that leverages cultural knowledge and lived experiences, challenging and coherent content in a learning environment where each student receives the support they need to succeed in mathematics. So as you can tell, we had a pretty high standards and hefty goal vision. The first thing I want to do is just kind of acknowledge our committee members. This really has been a labor of love. It took many hours for us to kind of come to this place today. So we have Liz Muscarello, who represented the HOD special education teachers, Jen Pfeiffer, who represented our kindergarten team, Deidre Ferrara and Marian Hart was our grade one representatives, Joan Marsden represented grade two, Amy Camo was our Freeman Kennedy special education rep, Amanda Moore represented grade three, Joni Zolo represented grade four, Sam Moore and Lisa McKenzie were our grade five representatives, Sarah Logan was our grade six representative, and Lisa Althanpikke and Tammy Rabello joined as our administrators. And of course, our district math specialist, Jen Violet, Elliot Cludier, and Lori Bosch. This would have been possible without this team's effort. So thank you very much again. So kind of just a quick overview of the scope of work. We went, we have like six phases that kind of guide our process. We start with a needs assessment to kind of identify our current masses, math program, what are our strengths, what are some areas that we really need to grow. Then we gather review and data from various sources, which I'll kind of go through, and we unpack the research to really understand what our data is showing us. We then develop, using the information gathered, a rubric that helps us guide us through the selection of the different math programs. And then we select programs to review in order to see which one best matches our rubric and the needs of our district. And then we're in a final phase of making a recommendation to school committee. So just really quickly, I just wanted to mention that we have a data-driven process that we use that has four phases, as you can see, go the predict, go visual, observe, and infer questions. This is a research-based data process that kind of really helps to ensure that all of our, everything that we do is kind of, it is grounded in data and information so we can really make the best decisions possible. This process helps us make targeted strategic decisions to improve our math outcomes for all. And we use it for all of our kind of review processes. We then conduct a SWOT analysis, which stands for Strength, Weaknesses, Opportunities, and Threats. And we basically take a look at all the data that we gather and we see, we group them into those, these four categories and we kind of identify, right, like what are our strengths, such as like one of the things could be like, oh, the materials currently are engaging, maybe some opportunities is that we need to bring in some more professional development. Threats, which not my favorite phrase, I don't know why they have it, but that's just the way they they labeled it. Maybe it could be like budget cuts or changes in like state expectations, you know what I mean, that could really kind of impede our progress. So once we have all of these components identified, we then can kind of move forward and develop our like a vision or like a rubric of what we need to do to help guide us. So we, so part of our data collection system, we send a survey to families. We have three hundred and twenty-five members that responded, which is a really great response rate, as you can see, it's broken down by grade level. So some of the strengths that families identified, they had an appreciation for resources that help support learning at home, such as Reflex, as I know it's some of the, some of our digital resources, as well as non-digital math games that were sent home by some of our educators. We see positive feedback on teacher-led engagement strategies, including math videos and interactive activities that that were provided. And the overall gave some really positive feedback about how we provide instruction here in Norfolk. Some challenges, which is families expressed needing some more support in guiding their children at home through the math curriculum, having more of consistency and homework expectations across grade levels and classrooms. Some of the families said that they felt that their child maybe was not challenged enough, so they were looking for more extension activities. And overall, there's also some more differentiation to address diversity. We also send a survey to our staff. We had a ninety percent response rate. So some of the strengths that they identified were that currently we have some comprehensive materials. We've done with the things that supported the math specialists, a lot of supplemental materials that we have integrated into the current program that we're using to kind of make sure that we're using the most research-based and current resources. The digital tools were, they found really supportive, having a clear structure, which is with any program, an aligned scope and sequence and routines, having visual supports and built-in differentiation. And some of the challenges- And some of the challenges, which is some, the feedback said that the current math program lacked developmental appropriateness in some areas. So maybe the standards were not aligned with Massachusetts' expectations and they kind of went ahead further, or the concepts were not given enough time to develop conceptually. They request a more challenge and spiraling of concepts, which kind of echoes what the family said, desire for more hands-on learning, engaging warmups, and differentiated instruction. They also felt that it was insufficient support for higher-achieving students and those requiring additional support. So that differentiation piece, which is, was also echoed in the family survey. And also a lack of scaffolding and adaptive learning technology. So adaptive is when sometimes we have assessments that is based on the student's answer. It will make a individualized kind of learning plan that will go with it to support the student. And just overall, more flexible engagement came up a lot, like kind of having a more engaging curriculum and accessible accessibility as well. So from there, and I've shared this rubric with you again, we developed a rubric for evaluating the curriculums and we kind of grouped all of the feedback, all of the data that we looked at from our district and state, the surveys, and we created a rubric that had seven categories, organization, content, program support for families, technology integration to support teachers and students, assessments, accessibility, and of course, professional development to support implementation of any new pedagogy expectations or the program. So we use this program to evaluate, we looked at over eight programs that were available. We narrowed it down to three programs from there. And then we found that really only one program met the, or met the most criteria that we identified in the rubric as what we were looking for. So I just want to catch up with my notes here, make sure I'm not. So Amplify Desmos came up as like the top contender. It was a unanimous vote by the, by our committee. We all felt that it really met so many of the components that mentioned in the survey and that our data showed. So this is the program we kind of want, we have selected and are presenting to you today. So a little bit of about why we selected Desmos Math. It's, we really felt that the philosophy of the program, it really builds around not only teaching the skills, but building our students as mathematicians. And that's something that we identified in our vision statement. It builds on their natural curiosity. It really gives them the time to be able to unpack and understand the mathematics behind it. And it does, it does a great job of combining hands-on problem solving with the practice, you know? So it has a really great structured approach to problem-based learning, which is something that we were missing with our current program. It really puts the teacher in being the position of the facilitator, you know, and helping the students kind of engage with mathematics. Amplify Desmos also build the philosophy of their program on four key areas that it centers. So the first one is a structured approach to problem-based learning, as I mentioned before, which is really around combines conceptual understanding, procedural fluency and application. It tells a story. So each module in grades K through five opens with a story problem. And that problem then it, it spirals throughout the unit. So like the students always come back to that story problem that's presented. So it has a very engaging way of introducing a math concept and it's real-world application too. And I'll have the math committee, because they've all have tried out numerous of the lessons in the module, so I'll give them an opportunity to kind of share a little bit more of their experiences with it. It also, it really has a great sequence. It, is it 170, 80 lessons, please? What is it based on? Yeah, like how many, it's shorter than most programs, right?
Yeah, so depending upon that grade level.
Right.
It's between 137 to 160. One fifty, one sixty.
So, thank you. The reason I wanted to pause and get the right number, because the great thing about that is that it gives you additional time to really be able to unpack a concept. So a lot of things, a lot of times we find that the previous programs overall, they would base it on a full-year school calendar, but we know that we never have full days. Like it's 180 days, but we have like, you know, there's assemblies or there's PD days or something, you know what I mean? So teachers are always feeling rushed to be able to finish the curriculum. And the way that this is paced out, it gives enough sufficient time to be able to dive deeply into a concept, but also has built-in time for review if you need it. And if you need to slow down the pace for your classroom because they need a little bit extra time with a concept, it does allow for that. So that's one of the things that we found was very appealing and we felt that it was really responsive to like how a teacher would pace something out, you know? There's also, I wanted to add the proficiency progression of how like the, the lessons are designed. So they go through like the, kind of like the five steps, which they activate a student's prior knowledge and curiosity. So there's always like a, an engagement activity, like a warm-up that they start with. They then give students an opportunity to generate new ideas. So they're asking for like, well, how do you think? Or like, what do you think the problem is? They give a lot of facilitation tools for teachers. They, there's a lot of practice and reinforcement and remediation and like the way it's built in that it really does give enough practice and repetition that it gives that lasting understanding. So the student really owns the concept. We put a little video, I guess I'll play it. If you weren't sure.
The math concepts will like keep reoccurring. When you get to a new concept, you know, it'll be recursive and it'll use some of the stuff from before. But I think what's most helpful is the, the structures are the same. So like from younger grades to older grades, no matter what the concept is, we're gonna do the same types of things, like what do you notice and what do you wonder? What, do you see anything different here? And like those processes like that are things that you can apply to all things in life. Like even if you have a plumbing issue at home, what do you notice? What do you wonder? What background knowledge do you have? Like I, and I share that with my students. Like it's not just stuff that you can do for math. Like you can figure other problems out in life with it as well.
So that noticing and wonder component is something we had to supplement a lot. And this is some, and this program has it built in, which is like really great because it gives that systematic approach to lesson, how, how we teach lessons. And it is such an important key skill to teach our kids, because that's something that carries over beyond mathematics. Again, the, the other two components that kind of make this program really strong is it really values student thinking and it really makes it visible. There's a lot of opportunities to share their thinking with their peers, to share their thinking with their class. And it's very like motivational, the way the, the program is designed. It, there's a lot of opportunities to engage with, with modeling. Like I said, there's a lot of opportunities to engage in exploration, you know? And like again, it really centers around building that student understanding of not only how do you solve the problem, but how do you approach a problem, which is what we want our kids to have. Because it's impossible in mathematics to teach every scenario, right? But if you can think your way through a problem, then you can really engage with any level of mathematics. And that sets them up for success in middle school and high school. And that, those are the skills that we really want to teach them at the elementary level. So we added some program highlights, but I wanted to give an opportunity, if anybody felt comfortable that you put everybody on the spot. But we talked a little bit about the program components. If there's anything that you feel like, when you try to outline something that you really found maybe helpful, or you don't have to.
I thought it was very engaging, right from the get-go. Whether you do it online or on a paper, it gives you the option of either to do it in a packet of paper or online. And it just captures their interest immediately. And then within a matter of maybe one or two minutes after a quick discussion, it involves them in an activity where they are leading and discovering and we are the facilitator. So we're kind of letting them try it on and get, you know, kind of like what a two-year-old would do with a pile of blocks, right? You just want to, you know, see what, what they can do with it. And it's just wonderful. And there's a lot of group activities, partner activities, and then they also have independent work as well as a spiral review of prior concepts. It's very well-rounded, I really liked.
Thank you.
I agree with Joanie. And also, I liked the fact that it was, anybody could access this program. So, you know, what I'm saying, but also our current program is, we teach it this way, you have to do it this way. This program, they find out a way that works for them and anyone can do it. This person might be a visual person thinker, this person might be a rhythm thinker, but they can figure out what works for them. And then there's an opportunity for review. There's opportunity to enrich. There's, you know, it is accessible to everybody, which I really liked. And it teaches them problem-solving skills, which is a life skill. And that is something they'll be able to carry with them forever.
Thank you. Some of the program highlights that we had, that we just wanted to, to share with you that is really unique to this specific math program, is that it always starts off with a warm-up and like the video said, what do you notice, what do you wonder? So in this like particular page example, you see the lessons are our rectangular, rectangular prisms. Instead of saying, this is what a rectangular prism is, it asks the students, what do you know about this concept? And it gives that opportunity for students to have that discussion, you know what I mean? And kind of cultivate ideas before like it is actually said like, well, this is what it is, you know what I mean? It also has something that's very unique and I feel like we are always looking for time to build into our math lessons, but because it's never built into the program, it's really hard to do so. But this one has a built-in synthesis. So that's when you gather the students, let's say for example, at the end of the lesson, you say, all right, like what do you, what did we learn today? You know what I mean? Like what are some skills that we learned? And it's a really great way for teachers to do a formative assessment too, kind of get a dipstick of like who is able to articulate what the lesson is, who maybe might have some misconception. And because it's like, again, it's built into the time, it's reachable, this part. And then again, it has a lot of differentiation every lesson. So we talked about some of the feedback we had, that we were looking, how do we challenge some students maybe who have a great grasp of the concept that's being taught? So like there's a stretch, there's a strengthen, and there's a support page. So, so differentiation is made easily. And again, the students are learning the same concept, it's just leveled a little bit to, to support their, their specific needs. It also has great print and digital resources. So one of the things that we kind of really found about this program is that the digital piece of it is extremely intentional. So it's not there just to kind of occupy time, because I know that's something like that this tech steering committee has been looking at. But if they're giving you a digital resource to use, it's going to elevate the lesson. And it, it has a, I put in how many digital lessons there are per grade level. So as you can see, it scaffolds up. So it starts with 10% in about, of the lessons are about digital in K-2, 15% in grades two, three, and 20% in grades four and five. So like I said, it's done with intention and it's done developmentally appropriate. Everything that's available digitally is available in print, you know? So the teacher always has a choice of not using the digital resource if they feel like maybe they want to do something in print. Is there anything else about these two that you wanted to add that I maybe missed?
The digital lessons are amazing. In every class that I've gone into, yeah, the kids are just really into it. And some of the lessons have, like Joanie was saying, there's like a symmetry gallery. So each kid makes a symmetry puzzle and it cuts it in half and then it goes into a gallery and all of their classmates have to solve their symmetry puzzle. And then it shows like who's seen your puzzle, who solved your puzzle, and the kids really get into it. And that's like, the kids are creating the problems that each other is solving and they're really understanding what symmetry is versus giving them a book with 20 examples of doing symmetry. They're gonna remember what symmetry is from that. And there's so many more that I can talk about. Like we were digging through, the way they show rounding, they have a guy on a ski lift, he jumps off and he like skis down to the correct part on the number line. It's just really, it's so well-done. And I feel like, at least for myself, I'm a, I'm a tough self. So I really am impressed with the ways they've done the digital lessons. And they're spread out, so there may only be two or three per entire unit. And again, it goes with the theme that that unit is focused on the story that is introduced in the beginning.
I also noticed that the kids are excited about helping each other.
Yes.
So the problems are progressive, so they get a little bit more challenging, a little bit more challenging. And so some might not be at that certain level and they might say, I can't quite get to this one. Oh, you gotta do this. So they don't even realize that they're also learning how to teach and share and grow together. I mean, the group, it's so engaging with everyone and it allows for them to have different groups every day. So they get, you know, it's very differentiated, but it's just, it's just amazing how they're doing it.
I also think part of the digital component, at least in second grade, there's opportunities where it's not just one student in front of a Chromebook, but it might be three or four students in front of the same Chromebook. So they're problem-solving and working together on the same computer, which is really different from what you've done before. I really like that component.
And that team, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I watched a lesson in Reese's room and as the teacher, she could see what the whole class was doing on her screen. And if she wanted to show like this student found this, she could pull that up and share it with the whole class. But this student did it this way and then pulled that one up and shared it with the whole class. So it was like very interactive and having that chance to, for her to see what everybody's doing and to be able to say, hey, you're doing a great job. Can we use you as an example and get their confidence up and make them feel really good?
And there's a lot, excuse me, emphasis on student voice. So everybody's voice will be heard throughout the, throughout the lesson, either through collaboration or through the warm-up, which are tools for high ceilings. Everybody has an entry point and everybody's entry point is perfectly acceptable. And then it becomes with the growth mindset. And you do see that now, the students are the ones lifting one another. That's, I've really noticed that. And then in kindergarten and first grade, there's a lot of centers as opposed to the technology. So it's really hands-on, concrete manipulative and there's a lot of learning that goes on in those centers. And then as, as you saw, the technology kind of gets introduced more and more. So the developmental appropriateness of the math concepts, the stories are, I don't know if anybody else wants to say, but the stories are unbelievable. They're so simple, but you have the kids' eyes bulging out of their heads as you're reading it and you're like, wow! And then every, every lesson comes back to a character and they're remembering everything, you know? Joe bought a pickle and then we're gonna be talking about pickles for an entire, you know, how many pickles, did he lose any pickle, like whatever it is? And they're like, oh, Joe! You know what I mean? So really, like the contextual, contextual piece of this is pretty magnificent. They don't even realize they're learning. Yeah, they're really engaged.
I think the one thing that was obvious to us is that this was created and written by educators for educators.
Yep. And I'd just like to toss in, because sixth grade is slightly different. We don't have the story and whatnot, but I felt like at this point of the year, we know our students. And I saw students participating actively in math that throughout the year had been quiet and, or complained. So it really, it was incredible to see those students feel like they could jump in with this platform.
And to hear them say, this is so much better.
So much better. I might have heard the word fun in math, yes.
We're not enthusiastic at all.
I'm excited about this program, thank you so much.
And the opposite was true for kindergarten and for sixth grade, that really having the story approach to kick off the unit, like Eileen was saying. like Eileen was saying, the children just, and it talks about community, which we're building community in kindergarten, you know, that's like a main theme. And so much is about they're going to school, the characters. And the slides are so rich in mathematics, but the kids are finding the mathematics visually. And then those are carried throughout the centers and the flow of group time, tabletop, partner, back-to-group show, you know? And then as an educator, I can use the SMARTboard to show some of their examples that they are, they are creating with dry erase or on paper. So in kindergarten, there's less use of individualized technology, which I think is very appropriate. But there are technology pieces that you can weave in as time goes on.
That's great. And all the skills that you can really tell if you go from kindergarten to sixth grade and like that, being able to, like even outside of mathematics. But how do you work with partnerships? You know what I mean? How do you share ideas? How do you, you know, get ideas from others, you know what I mean? And use that to problem-solve together? Like it's just like such valuable skills. So like I said, again, it stretches beyond. So we had some outside of the committee, we actually had other teachers that have also tried out the lessons. And in some cases, they actually decided to just teach the rest of the units that we had because they were so excited by the program. And I asked them to share just a couple of soundbites of what they thought of their experience so far. So I just wanted to share with you, as you can tell, that there's a lot of excitement from teachers too. And I also asked them to share kind of like what their students thought, K through six. So I captured some of them for you as well. But you can see fun has come up, you know what I mean? I feel like the students are actually enjoying what they're learning, you know? Sharing of strategies is fun, you know? It's just, unit stories have come up, so. Yeah, so I wanted to share with you what the program components and next steps are. So for students, it comes as a full package. You basically get, the ELA program is sort of at à la carte. You got to pick like different components, but this is like, this is what the students get. They have a student addition, they'll have full digital access, and then additional practice pages that come with it. For teachers, there's a teacher addition, they'll again have full digital access. They'll be able to, there's assessment components that are built into the program. There's unit assessments, and then there's something called M-Class, which is a benchmark assessment that is adaptive and kind of measures students' learning three times per year. Kind of like how are they being able to summarize their learning in the beginning of the year? There's a screener that kind of levels where the student is before coming into the grade level. So a teacher can really target if there's any supports that needed. There's a mid-year to see how they're able to verbalize what they've learned already and show that in their work, and then there's an end-of-year. There's intervention and extension resources that are included. There's central resources that are included. And also math language development resources. So there's vocabulary routines, activity pages to really support our English learner, English language learners. For our, so everybody, the central kits can be printed because everything that says is available online. But we're actually going to purchase some ready-made ones for K through three because there's a lot more cutting, so we thought it might be help. And then, but they will be available for grades four and five. Grade six doesn't have central kits because they have a little bit more of a model, middle school model. We're also going to have, it's called a Boost Personalized Learning. So it's a little bit more of an engagement gamified as a supplement that kind of helps reinforce skills that will be available for teachers to use. And that diagnostic screening tool and progress monitoring that I mentioned earlier, that's called M-Class, will also be available for us. Going to the cost proposal. So we did a five-year quote with, and I gave you the full quote in your package, so you can kind of see exactly what we'll be purchasing by grade level and by item. But our five-year quote is $250,000 plus $7,900 additional for professional development. We felt that it is a big shift of how mathematics will be taught. So we really wanted to make sure that our teachers, especially in the first year of implementation, have all the supports that they need. So we split the payment into two years. So we would have to pay 60% the first year, which will be $150,000, and then the remaining $100,000 would be paid the following year. I think that's it about the cost. And they did, if you look at the quote, they did give us, for so many kits that we purchased, we got like more that are free. So we were able to negotiate a little bit to, as you know, the programs are very expensive. So I tried to keep it within our budget as best as possible that we had. So they did work with us there, and they did reduce the shipping cost, which can be quite expensive too for all the materials to come here.
Vicki, can I just jump in there for a second? So as I'm sure you're noticing, that the cost proposal came in higher than we originally budgeted and anticipated. I think we had $120,000 in the budget. It's going to be $150,000 for the first year. But as Miriam alluded to earlier, we are going to get a second payment from the state for supporting student, the newcomer students this year. That revenue is, really shouldn't be applied to salaries, it's one-time revenue. So there are ways that we can use that to offset other costs we had to create revenue to offset the cost of this program. When they did, to keep it within budget, you have to look at a four-year proposal. And if we did that, we're paying an additional about $5,000 annually for materials. So I think that we are confident that we will have the revenue to offset that additional cost based on the additional payment coming in in August.
And it is cheaper to go with like if you.
Five years.
Five years than the four years too.
Yeah.
So my last part, I just wanted to share a little bit some of our next steps. So next year will be in our first year of our math implementation. And as you know, it'll be in our second year of our ELA implementation. I do wanted to share that we're gonna, we've been working with the math committee and our ELA committee as well to kind of see how we can best balance the two adoptions. We're gonna, like I said, we've added to the package $7,900 to really give a substantial professional development for staff. We're going to have an overview in August of the program. And then there'll be numerous opportunities for teachers to meet with the coaches from Amplify Desmos, who are educators themselves, and to kind of help with the implementation process too, and hopefully they'll be supportive. We use our data and curriculum meetings to support the implementation and the continuation of our ELA program. Our instructional coaching also, our math coaches and our literacy coaches are, work very closely with teachers to kind of help them support with unpacking the program, identifying maybe resources, and kind of really guiding them through the process. And then, yeah, so I think that, as you can tell by our team, I think we're very excited by the potential of this program. I think it will tremendously help us achieve our vision that I shared with you at the beginning. So we're ready for any questions that you might have for us.
Is, in terms of rollout, this is next academic year? All sixth grades, or is it rolling out just?
We're gonna do all sixth grades.
Okay.
Our current program that we have sunset, so it's not in production anymore. So for all grades, we have to have something new because we can't get the prior program.
The platform is going down, so there's no access. But we also felt that this program is so rich that I think people are excited to be able to do it throughout, you know?
Yeah, I was, did we, with ELA, we rolled out partial?
No, we did full.
Did full as well, okay.
I think one thing we forgot to mention too is there's a caregiver hub with the program to support the homeschool intervention.
Thank you.
And anything, if they enhance the program in any way, we are, they'll give that to us.
Yes.
You know, update the program or add some special things to it, and we have access to that.
That's a great point, yeah. So they do include all the updates if there are any ones. And they seem to be very responsive, you know? They are actually coming out of their beta phase. And we actually talked to a school in, was it Brooklyn, New York?
New York.
Yep, yes. And they just did it, the Bronx?
No, I think it was closer to Rochester.
Anyways, New York City. But they've been in, they've been in the pilot for a couple of years as elementary school. So we really had a great conversation around how it went. And they said that the shift that they saw in students' mathematical thinking and ability was like, was just really incredible. So that's like the feedback we got from, from the director. Any other questions?
I will say that my daughter was lucky enough with Missolo to pilot part of this. And she's not a huge math lover, but I did hear the word fun multiple times.
That's our goal. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thanks. So I was wondering, after going through the ELA adoption, why there was only one proposal? Because the ELA, we had multiple to look at. And then I heard the eight to three to one, and I was even more intrigued. And now just hearing the enthusiasm, it's like, let's get this in here. These kids going, because I still have two to go.
I don't think it's just enthusiasm with us too. I can speak for the second grade teachers. I think everyone has piloted multiple lessons at this point, and everyone is excited about it. They are, all of the teachers, at least for second grade, are so excited about this. We talk about it all the time during our, you know, prep time or when we're planning together. So I think it's, I don't think it's just the committee. I think anyone who's really taken a look at the program and has had an opportunity to try it out is really, really excited about it.
Yeah, that stuck out to me, Vicki, when you said that, you know, other teachers have said, I want to keep using it because.
Right, I mean, it's really, it's not something I've seen before, you know what I mean? And that's what, so just to answer your question. So the ELA, we had, we did the same thing process with the ELA, where we usually start, we look at everything that's out there. We kind of do a quick elimination because maybe the ratings weren't high enough or there was other factors that kind of eliminated. We use the same rubric. And after going the whole process, we actually found two programs that we felt were very compatible. They met about the same, they checked the same, like checks for us, you know? So we said, all right, like let's have our teachers pilot the two programs and see which one they felt. With math, which was unexpected for us, we did the same thing. We looked at all the programs that are out there, we kind of were, through the process, were eliminating some. And we came to three potentials, which was illustrative math, this Amplify Desmos, and iReady. And then, so we had their salespeople come present and speak to us. We requested they give us samples of their materials. And we tried out some other lessons. And the more we unpacked the other two programs, we found the illustrative math and iReady. We found that they just did not hold a candle to what Amplify Desmos. We found one program was very, had more like a very traditional approach. It was very similar to Go Math. So we thought like, we're going to run, like what we're finding shortage with Go Math, we're kind of going to put ourselves in the same situation. And illustrative math, which is a great program, but they've been around now for a couple of years, and we've had some experience in other districts with it. There were some components that were missing from that program. And this program took like the best components of illustrative math and then fixed what was missing, you know what I mean? So just to kind of mention at the point that Plainville and Frontal and the middle school, I think it's a few versions, they're using illustrative math. But Amplify actually is quite similar to the structure, to the scoping sequence. Even some of their lessons are very similar, that the transition for students is not going to be felt. But they're just gonna, just Amplify Desmos, like I said, it has, has a lot more enhancements that illustrative math was missing. So that's why the other two programs fell off for us. And we took a vote, and I think we met like twice because we really, like we really wanted to put two to give people a choice, but we felt like it just would, like why waste people's time to look at a program that we know is not meeting, you know what I mean? So once we put forth, we talked to our, our real level reps, talked to their teams, we kind of explained like, you know, this is kind of like where we are. And once every, like teachers tried it, as you mentioned, you know what I mean? Like people really felt that this was the right program for us. Does that? Yeah, no, that's awesome.
I have another question.
Sure.
On the survey responses, there was the parents asking about resources and how they can support. Does this have any guidance or elements that will help with that aspect?
Yes.
There's a caregiver hub, and then it goes through the units.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And it explains everything, and there's little, depending on your grade level. But there's activities that you can do going along with it. But it runs very parallel to what they're doing in school for the day. Like for the unit, excuse me.
So it should help kind of like parents understand the way that they're learning? Because I know like the way that we learned a long time ago is so different. And sometimes when we see what the kids bring home, we're like, I don't know how to explain this to you. So it will kind of like guide you into like their thinking too?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we're thinking, I was just talking to Lisa and Tammy also about how maybe either incorporating into our open houses or maybe holding like a separate curriculum night, and maybe just having parents come and explore now that we have the ELA and the math program. So we kind of can walk them through both of the parent support components that are available, you know? And let parents kind of explore the resources too. So we definitely have something, we'll just have to figure out with timing what is best for families, like which of the two we might hold it. But we definitely have, we want to kind of walk our families through the two new programs that we have.
Having sat through several curriculum adoption processes over the past lots of years, this is the most enthusiastic recommendation I have ever heard. So I obviously went through the materials and the presentation's very thorough, but such an overwhelming endorsement is fantastic. And I have a sixth grader who was lucky enough to try out a few of the lessons and gave it her resounding stamp of approval with no eye-rolling and no, you know, no complaints about math. Yeah, so I'm excited for the district.
I can see so much thought went to this, and I really appreciate that. Thank you. It was a very thorough analysis, and I'm so excited to see how you all excited. One question I did have for you all, looking, just listening to the presentation and looking at the materials, it does seem much more language-heavy than what kids were used to previously. Do you think there are enough supports? Or will you need additional support for kids who historically struggled with the ELA but didn't struggle with math, or struggled with math and it got to the word problems? I don't think it's like a bad thing, they're still working on it, which is great. But do you think the supports are there for those kids?
So I'm a special ed teacher. I think this is a much better setup for that. I think Go Math is very wary, and some of the stuff in it was irrelevant. The kids didn't even know what it was because it was older. This one, there are features where it could be read, but it's also very hands-on. And you give them a problem, like as a whole class, and they can work it out however they want. It's not, you know, they don't have to read the words, break it apart. You know, you give them a problem, you play the story, you read the story, and they can draw on their whiteboard, they can use manipulatives. It's very hands-on. And I saw a lot of success in the classroom with kids who typically struggle in math because they could do it their way, they could visualize it, they could draw it, they could. And I saw some of the other kids that were bored, have to just memorize it, really have to, have to really struggle, like to try and problem-solve and try and look at it, you know, from a real-life perspective. So I think for kids that struggle with reading, this is much better.
Okay, that's great to hear. Thank you.
I think some of the feedback that I received from the students were not so many words. And challenging, challenging but fun, yeah.
And the modeling is very, very strong here. So like even, I think Sarah, you did the rectangular prism lesson where the students were working in groups, and they had a 3D model that they could manipulate in turn. So like, and then they had the worksheet to answer questions, you know what I mean? So like, there's such a strong component and correlation of that. There's a lot of hands-on manipulative usage, you know what I mean? Which kind of helps with that like multi-module like modality, like, you know, of understanding.
We did, we did the lesson with surface area. And they took the three-dimensional shape, and they flattened it out. And then they have to, you know, recalculate something and figure out how to put it back together. And if it's not right, they see that it doesn't work. So it's not just, you know, all these numbers, it's very visual, you know what I mean? Same actually taught, my.
Definitely focus more on quality than quantity. So you will see like an activity may have the students answer two really good problems together and then come back to the classroom or come back as a group rather than, like I said, for 20 problems where they're just robotically answering by repeating a formula. There was a third grade class I went into, and I looked at the teacher, I said, I'm not sure, this is going to be a tricky one. She said, okay, I said, you ready for this? Yep, we tried it, and the kids, they rose to the occasion. It was absolutely amazing. We looked at each other like, that was amazing. I wish we had taken that. And it was just like two. And it was just like, two problems, but they were really neat. And the kids really, like I said, they rose to the occasion. It was really impressive.
Same to us, and then one of the kids actually said, I might like math now.
So Vicki, are you looking for a vote?
Yes.
Everyone's looking for a vote.
So we're looking for a vote to approve the adoption of Amplify Desmos Math.
I will move to approve Amplify Desmos.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? No? Just thank you all so much. The work clearly shows. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This team has put a ton of hours and time into this. And as Vicki said, they were looking at programs in the conference room. That was a marathon day, but they were really like delving through and looking at all the lessons. And as many people have mentioned, a lot of our teachers have tried this on now. And it's been pretty universally engaging, and people are excited to try it. So thank you for all of your time and efforts, everyone. And also, you may feel free to go home.
We can shuffle our papers around. We can give you a minute.
I'm going to take a quick.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, all right. All right, so next we'll jump into the M-class math benchmark field study. Vicki, you want to?
Sure. So we kind of had, have an exciting opportunity to be part of the beta pilot for middle school. So Amplify Desmos has an assessment, a digital assessment, that they have implemented part of their program, K through five, which they're just coming out of beta, will have full access to it. That's the one that we're going to be using to assess students' understanding. There's a, like I mentioned before, beginning of year screener. There's a middle of the year assessment and end of the year assessment. It also has progress monitoring capabilities. That is something that we've been looking for a couple of years now, for a good progress monitoring tool in mathematics. We have a good one for ELA. We've had a difficult time finding one. So I was able to negotiate a one-year trial of their released K through five program for M-class. So we'll have full access to everything next year. I just want to make sure that before we kind of purchase it, that it's something that would be really a great tool to measure our students' progress in grades K through five. And for grades six to eight, which is what this is about there, they haven't developed the tool yet. They are in, they're doing a beta pilot of it. So we've been invited to participate in their field study. So basically, it's going to be the same program that is for K through five, but it'll be a middle school version of it. They, what it's going to give for us, and I've talked to our sixth grade team, they're very excited to be part of this. It'll give us access to this assessment tool. Otherwise, it would have to be two years for us to have access for it until it kind of comes out of the beta pilot phase into the release. So we'll have access for that. So we'll have data that is consistent, K through six. We will also be able to keep the data that is gathered from next year to support our ongoing, so there'll be like a seamless progression of it. And we'll also have kind of a voice in being able to give them some feedback about what we think of the tool. It really is not a big lift for the teachers. The assessment is given three times a year. The progress monitoring tool is not available yet, because they want to kind of solidify this one. We're going to have a liaison that's going to be working with our teachers and the Amplify Desmos developers to kind of coordinate the assessment. And the nice thing about it, they said that we can actually hire our own teacher to be the liaison. So our math specialist, Lori Bosch, is going to be the one that will be supporting grade six, which is fantastic. She works for them already. She was a former Madison grade math teacher, you know? And she basically will be, will do the coordinating. The teachers are going to have the opportunity to set the own testing window. And basically, the kids will take the assessment. It takes, these assessments overall are very succinct. They take about 30 to 40 minutes, you know? And like I said, they basically just want to be able to test out their product to see how it withstands the student, actual student responses. One of the other things is that they need to be able to have a, to be able to validate the data. So they're partnering with StarMath, which is by Renaissance Learning. This has been around for a really long time. Actually, it's one of the programs we looked at a couple of years ago. We just didn't feel like it fit the needs of what we were looking for. But they're going to use StarMath to validate the M-class results, just to make sure that like, these responses are. So what that's going to involve is that the students are going to need to take the M-class test and then the same-length StarMath test as well. They don't need to do it at the same time, like, it can be spaced out a little bit. But it really is just for them, for their own purposes, to validate the, like I said, the data. If we want the StarMath data for our own purposes, they're happy to release it to us. But it's really, like I said, just to have a validating point for that cross-validation. There will be a parent opt-out form available for families who prefer not to have their child participate in the study. I can't imagine that that would be an issue, but that is going to be offered. And yeah, I think that the sixth grade is really enthusiastic about this opportunity. And I think that, again, we're kind of recognizing that having the benefit of having data for sixth grade next year would be really valuable for us. And again, we'll have, if we do the pilot, we'll have available M-class for us for free for the two years while they're conducting the pilot process. Our pilot's only going to be one year, but they take two years to release it. I'm happy to take any questions before.
So what happens? We're presenting this separately, because by school committee policy and past practice, if we have students participating in anything that's a research study, the school committee approves that separately. So what will be released at the end of this pilot will just be part of a regular math curriculum. It's the math assessments that have already been beta-tested and approved at K through five. So it's just that this is still in development. Amplify is one of the vendors who has signed on to the data, student data privacy requirements that our district has in place, and many other districts use that same data privacy agreement, so.
They're part of, yeah, they're part of the Student Data Privacy Alliance, which is like, oh, that they're saying that.
So what happens to the second year? If this, the assessment data will have access for only one year, did you say? Or did I misunderstand?
The pilot is only one year, but they need two years to develop it. So we will, if we, we'll have an opportunity, actually, if this pilot goes well the following year, to try out their progress monitoring tool. But we can continue to have access to the assessment whilst in beta.
Okay.
But I think you're asking, what happens? Will we still have access to our own students' results after completion of the pilot?
Yes.
The next incoming sixth grade class, will you have, be able to get assessment data? Okay, you will, okay.
Looking for a motion to participate in the Amplify Desmos M-class math field study for grade six.
That was quick.
So moved. And then, is there further, someone second? Okay. Any further discussion on it?
Yeah, I had one more question. Is the assessment data for the current year, when you do it next year, right? Is it, does it help those students, or does it help the following students?
Both.
Both?
So, so we would give this as part of the math program assessment. Teachers will see the data on their individual students, correct, Vicki?
Yes.
During the pilot, and they can use it.
The same what K through five has, which is like, they give their, like, say, beginning of the year screener, which assesses like their incoming skills. The teachers will have access to the data, they can make instructional responses to it, you know what I mean, and kind of use the data real time. It's just, it's not, it's just not ready for it to be released, because they wanted to, because they've developed the product now. They just need some schools to test it out, to make sure that it stands up to what they're hoping it will do for the middle school level.
But they will use it to make instructional decisions for their current class. End-of-year data often helps, but our sixth graders will be bridging to KP. But end-of-year assessments, you use to support grading on the report card, other things like that. So it would be used for.
Cool. Yeah, thank you.
That was a good question.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to jump back to the school highlights. So we just wanted to share some of the things that have been going on in the past week. It's been a very, very busy month in school as we get ready to close out the year. But just wanted to highlight a few things. On Friday, May 30th, we had the first KP student senior stroll. That was, it was a great event. All of the KP graduated seniors had a chance to visit their elementary districts and stroll through the halls and tour the buildings. Teachers and students came out, and teachers were thrilled to see their students they had back in sixth grade now getting ready to graduate. So it was a really nice event. We hope that will be an annual tradition. We're also looking at, I think Ms. Altamicki talked about, reaching out to some private schools, inviting students that may have not attended KP who want to participate and come back. But that was a really nice event. We also had a chorus concert at the Freeman Kennedy. There was an evening concert for parents, and then a day performance for students. Ms. Musial and her two assistants, Ms. Carter and Ms. McNamara, did a fantastic job. The students were very energized. There was a lot of movement and dancing. It was really fun. The students that were attending the performance enjoyed it, so that was a really nice event. We also, on June 3rd, we had the Second Annual Unified Schools Games Day. That is something that we work with an outside group. It used to be sort of Special, what people remember as Special Olympics, where students used to travel to one location and compete. The philosophy behind that has really been how to bridge your own school district to make games accessible for students throughout the course of the year. And then it's celebrated in a culminating Unified Schools Day. So that happened a couple of weeks ago. We had an opening ceremony, students, you know, marched with their peers. The band was playing. There were, the Falcons program participated. So there were peer models that came out to support students at different games. They had a bucket challenge, bowling, balance beam, wheelie races. Freddie the Falcon was there. It was a really nice event. So we wanted to recognize Jason Conley, who is one of our teachers who spearheaded the Unified Games Day, and Julia Fardett, who also supports the Falcons program and partnered. Holmes Bus donated transportation for the day, and the PTO and CPAC worked together. They provided lunch and shirts for the participants. So that was a really nice event. We had many, many teachers at different grade levels holding author's teas and poetry readings. For our second grade students, our music teacher, Mr. Oskeli, worked with the classes, and students developed class songs that they composed. And so those were showcased and highlighted during the author's teas. Students shared original works that they had done, or recited poems that they had been studying. So those have been great. We also had, Vicki, I don't know if you want to jump in on this one, but our technology integration teacher, Robin Tusserey, as you guys heard earlier in the year, was piloting some Museum of Science kits to, that really focused on STEM and engineering and design. We had doggy door, grade three worked on doggy doors that opened and closed automatically. This past month, she's been working with grade two on a pumpkin pollinator unit. And so students were designing, they had to take on the role of an agricultural engineer, tasked with designing a hand pollinator to help a pumpkin farmer pollinate our crops. So these have been really exciting units. And again, similar to the math, kids have to really plan, design, test ideas, refine their thinking, and create solutions. So it's been really well-received and a positive thing. We hope to expand these engineering STEM units across multiple grade levels moving forward. Anything you want to jump in on that?
It's just like, the nice thing about it, it teaches the kids how the process that engineers go in terms of solving like a real-world problem, you know? So like, you mentioned, the first one was how to design a safe food area for stray dogs, so they can come in and get food, and how do you keep like rodents away? So they had to design a magnetic door that would open. And kids like had to talk about like, well, how would a dog open a door? How would they close it? So they talked about maybe like, kids designed like a little stepping thing, like that would, you know, when you put weight on it, it opened. And the conversations were just so rich. And they were so, and again, like that fun and engagement, like, they were excited about being part of this and kind of solving this problem. And the problems always tie in like, to actual, a real-world scenario. So it's not just like arbitrary, starts with a story that, like, they took example that in Puerto Rico, there's a lot of stray dogs. And one of the issues they have is how do you feed the stray dogs safely? And how do you keep the food safe? So that was a whole story problem. They were introducing two kids who lived in Puerto Rico, and that's what they were trying to solve. And the kids became engineers to help support that. And the same thing with grade two, with the pumpkin pollinators, you know? They were able, like, how do you solve a pollination problem? They talked about the problem with bees, you know what I mean, in the world? So it is just like such a great real-world application. And they go through the engineering process of like, how do you assess a problem? How do you identify tools that you need, like?
How do you find your design when it doesn't work? And they're using a lot of rich science vocabulary.
Very collaborative, kids working, and like, it's just like the language and the questions that the kids raise, like, I was like really impressed by like the quality of it. So, and it ties in so well to the, like, it crosses over to their social standards, these reports are science standards, their math standards, you know? It just really hits, so, it's fantastic.
Across the greens, we've had grade-level field days. We have not had the best weather for some of them. But our wellness teachers, Mr. McGuire, Mr. Goodwin, and Ms. Pereira have been working with the PTO again, and a lot of our parent volunteers who've come in and helped to run those field days. On Thursday, June 5th, we had our annual clapout for our grade-two students. We do that a little bit early, because we'd like the kindergarten kids to be able to participate in the end school. Today was the last day of kindergarten. So the students line the halls, PTO buys shirts for all the grade-two that say H. Olive Day alum. The younger kids have little hand clappers that they shake, and the kids do a parade around the school. So that was a lot of fun. And they also have posters with each child in grade-two's name hung along the walls. We had on Friday, the kindergarten memory show. There were two performances. And we had a large amount of parents and families, grandparents, aunts, uncles come to see the memory show. The students perform songs that kind of reflect their journey through kindergarten. And then they always end with, we are the kids of HOD, to the tune of It's a Small World. So that was a really nice family event. Lots of tears. It's amazing how much they grow from the time they walk into kindergarten to the time when they leave. I think it was, yeah, just yesterday, our fourth grade students had their annual state fair extravaganza. That's part of their curriculum. They learn about states. They do a research project, they design a float, and then they have sort of a presentation where you can walk in and learn from each child about the state that they studied. The kids were really excited. They had all kinds of fun facts about their state, as well as information about the history of the state, crops, state flower, important historical events. That was really nice that we had families coming in to visit the state fair extravaganza. And then we also had an event with the Tri-Town Middle School with KP, where our sixth grade teachers, math and science teachers from all three towns spent half a day meeting with grade-seven teachers at the middle school to share instructional practices and priorities. So they talked about what's being taught, the resources they're using to teach, and also really working on that vertical alignment of sharing and bridging the elementary experience to KP. So that was also a great event. Many, many more things happening, but in the interest of time, those are some of the highlights of what's been going on around the district. Vicki, I think you wanted to give a very quick update on the ELA.
Sure. It just, our first year is, Malaysian has been a strong success, thanks to the hard work of our teachers. They have been really thoughtful in planning and were really committed to making sure, unpacking the different program components with the support of the literacy coaches. In grades K-2, the focus has been a structured literacy aligned, which is a lot with the principles of the science of reading. And we've been focusing on like phonetic awareness, decoding routines, and like systematic phonics, which is some of the areas that we identified that we were looking to lift with this program. In grades three through six, we've emphasized in grammar, mechanics, close reading strategies, where students learning to analyze text more deeply and communicate with greater precision. So we've also had a really strong alignment across grade levels with shared instructional practices and those consistent use of the program, which is great, you know? So we have really like equitable experiences for our students. And then looking ahead for year two, our focus will shift next year towards mastering the writing components of the program and incorporating the full range of center-based activities. The program came with a lot of components, which are fantastic, but you can't unpack everything in year one. And we intentionally scaffolded the rollout to give teachers the time and support they need to kind of really master the different. need to kind of really master the different components of the program. So next year, our focus will be on writing, the different elements in writing, like setting up pack and the other components of the program. And our professional development will also support that. For them.
Very exciting, good job. Next, I, I did send the committee an email just to update you on some shifts that we're experiencing in enrollment, but just to highlight. So over the past couple of weeks, we've seen a decline in our anticipated kindergarten enrollment for the fall of September, for September 2025, primarily due to, we have five families who've notified they, us that they are moving. We have a handful of families who have decided to wait, whose kids are on the younger side, who are going to wait an additional year before enrolling, and then a few families that have opted to stay in preschool for an additional year. As a result, we are going to shift from planning for seven kindergarten sessions down to six, primarily also because at grade two, we, when we talked about the budget, you knew grade two was one of our largest classes. And we had nine first grades this year. We were planning for eight second grades. That put most of our classes at 21, which is the maximum class size. Since that time, we've had some additional enrollment into grade two. So we now have eight classes all at the maximum policy before starting the summer. We looked at trend data. Typically, we get five to seven students that enroll over the summer. We also had four first grade students that withdrew in August based on concerns about the implementation of the shelter and what that impact might be on class size. And we know some of those families are intending to return. So we have moved that kindergarten position up to grade two to generate nine sessions, which means that both kindergarten and grade two will be under the, the maximum class size limit. At the same time, we are also looking closely at grade three. I think Lauren mentioned when we talked about the budget, that grade three class sizes were very high. We were not filling a retirement as one of the budget reductions, but we also have had some shifts in enrollment. So right now, we are budgeting for five third grade classes. Four of them are at 24. One is at 23. We also typically get four to five students over the summer in grade three, and we also had five second grade students withdraw late August. Concerns around that are that if we have even two students, we're going to have classes at 25, which is really high for third grade. So what I would like to propose to the school committee, as you're probably aware, if you've been following the state budget, there is currently a proposed significant increase in Chapter 70 allocations for education. And right now, it's gone through both the House and the Senate at an increase of $150 per student. The budget has not been finalized yet. It's in conference committee, but the conference committee's goal is to resolve differences between the House and Senate budget. And both House and Senate funded it at the $150 increase per student. That said, we would be anticipating, that would yield for us about $150,000 additional educational dollars in Chapter 70 funding. That funding goes to the town of Norfolk to support education. So it, in the past, we have talked with the select board, they've always indicated that they would support returning that money to the town at Fall Town Meeting. I don't know that it will be the full $150,000 because there are some proposed differences between the House and Senate budget on unrestricted government aid, which is another source of revenue that goes to the town. So there might be other cuts that they weren't anticipating funding, that they're using to fund other portions of the educational budget. But I do expect that there would be enough additional revenue from the Chapter 70 to offset the cost of a third grade teacher. For the regional school, for KP, the additional Chapter 70 money goes directly to KP. It does not go to the towns. So this additional Chapter 70 that's coming into Norfolk would not be allocated to KP because they'll get that, that revenue directly. So I would recommend at this point that the school committee consider allowing us to, based on anticipated additional revenue in the fall, move forward with hiring and advertising a third grade teacher to bring those class sizes down below 25, which is where I think they will be in the fall if we do not do that. Additionally, because we are reducing a kindergarten session, we will be reducing a kindergarten paraprofessional position. That $25,000 in savings, I would recommend that we reallocate. And in the budget, one of our other priorities was a .5 technology break fix staff member. As Trish mentioned today, they have a small team of three that supports a massive amount of function. Also, over the last two years, when we restructured the business office, one of the things Trish didn't even mention today, is that the tech team also does all of the state reports. There's about 13 different reports that require hundreds of hours of data, addressing data errors, gathering data, submitting to the state. Our business office used to support that, probably one day a week. With the restructure of the business office and the business taking on payroll, they can no longer do that. When we reduced the tech integration teacher two years ago, that person also had one day in the schedule to support break fix. So they've actually lost point, probably point four of staffing over the last two years. It's not doable. They're drowning right now. And so I would recommend we reallocate that $25,000 in savings from the paraprofessional to a .5 break fix, which would be cost neutral for the district. Other reductions that we have not addressed, some were paraprofessionals that were reduced due to attrition. We do not need those positions back. There was an additional reduction to clerical support in both school offices. That's something we're still looking to see if with additional revenue coming in through the shelter or other ways we can address, that is another need. But I think the tech is, is critical at this point. So looking for a vote from the school committee to allow us to move forward with hiring a third grade teacher and reallocating the savings from the reduced kindergarten to support a .5 technology position.
I will move to make the alterations to the budget as stated and requested.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions?
No, I'm just happy.
I had a question, just, would it be feasible for us to communicate to the select board that we're earmarking some of these anticipated funds so that we can have an ongoing dialogue with them?
I think it's a good idea. So I have already talked with Justin Casanova Davis. He believed that the, the select board in their past has always supported that. There is a changeover, obviously, a new town administrator and new select board in place. So I do think that it would be a good idea for us to get on the agenda soon and talk about the additional Chapter 70. I mean, it is, it's funding for education. The reason it's being increased at the state is because municipal budgets are not I see it. Municipal budgets are not keeping up with increasing costs. So that is definitely the intent of the money and I think people are well aware of that. So, but I do think it's a good idea to get on the agenda in August to communicate the goal.
Just the, the hiring of, and you know, I mean, it's not, we're not spending it on tangible items that we could then not procure or something like that.
Absolutely. I think that, that would be a worthwhile endeavor. I do think, the reason I'm asking us to, to vote now is that the candidate pool is very different in June than it will be in August, and it also impacts our planning and our classroom moves and everything. There. Mouse? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'll try to go through some of these next items quickly because I know in the interest of time. Quarterly belling report by policy, I present that to you every quarter. There were no reports this last term of potential bullying at the H Olive Day School. There were two at the Freeman, fully investigated. The circumstances for both did not meet the criteria for, for bullying, but appropriate disciplinary action was taken. And we continue to provide comprehensive instruction on anti-bullying through Open Circle and Second Step at all grades. Any questions on that? Okay. Next, the, in your packet last month, we had a proposed, and there was a typo in the, the document, but proposed changes to the food service salary schedule. Food service is a revolving fund that is offset by state monies allocated based on the, the sale of school lunch, because school lunch is free. So the, we get reimbursed from the state for the number of lunches. We have a healthy revenue in that account. It cannot be used for any other purpose except for school lunch. So that said, we have sufficient revenue to offset the proposed salary adjustment. As we've talked about before, we've regionalized as best as we can, the, the food service program. So we share one director now, one assistant director between Rantham, Plainville, and Norfolk. All three districts have different salary schedules for kitchen support and for our cafeteria workers, kitchen managers, which makes it difficult to share staff if we ever have a need or, or bring in subs for positions because we all pay different amounts. So what we're looking to do is try to align better. Norfolk is the lowest paying of all three districts. So we are trying to raise the salary schedule to be more in line with what Plainville is current, what their projected salary schedule is for Plainville. We cannot afford to fully align with Rantham at this point, so we're bridging between the two. So you can see the current salaries on the front and on the back is the proposed change, rate changes per July, beginning in July one. It should be about $15,000 total for the year to make this change. And we, as again, we currently have an estimated fund balance of $316,000 in there that can only be used for school capital projects or kitchen projects or for the food service program. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I heard, I don't know if this was a, I can't even recall at this point where I heard this from, but that the preschool lunch was going away potentially? And if that happened, how does that impact, like would that mean that our school lunch prices would have to go up for families?
Well, right now, we have a balance of 316 that we're carrying over and the cost of this is only about $15,000. So it wouldn't affect it for right now.
For right now.
And I haven't, I haven't heard that. It was voted in to be fully funded, but
And I don't recall where I heard that from. I was just like, what?
As of right now, it is funded at the state level. Yeah. So we just need a, a vote to approve the change in rates for service.
I move to approve the proposed change in rates to the school food, food services pay rates.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is SAC. It's a rate, pay scale rate change. I will, in the August meeting, Tony Davis has provided me with some data, so I will give the school committee an update. We have restructured that program and significantly reduced the waitlist for open spots for SAC. So I will share that data with you next. One of the things that limits our ability to continue to expand is that we have had a great deal of difficulty filling the team leader position. Those were open in both buildings all year this year. So the proposal is just to increase the rate of pay for the team leader to try to make it more competitive so we can recruit people to come in and fill those positions. We did a regional comparison, looked at rates of pay for the similar positions in other neighboring districts and are recommending that we raise that rate slightly. So on the back, you'll see the proposed rate. Everything else just reflects the school committee approved COLA 1.5, COLA for all steps except for step three, three and a quarter for step three, but with just a slight adjustment to the team leader salary to try to make it more appealing and aligned with the market. And again, SAC is a revolving fund. It's offset by tuition, so we have sufficient money to absorb that rate change. So looking for a recommend, recommendation to approving the rate change for the team leader position and the adjusted salary scale for SAC.
I move to approve the proposed pay rate adjustments to the SAC salary scale.
I'll second.
Further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bay State Shelter update, very quickly, that is still scheduled to close at the end of July. We've had more students moving out. I think at this point, we have 21 students remaining, a couple of students leaving this week. I think most students will probably be gone by the middle of July and then there's some time for shutting down the site. But it seems to be still on track. We have another meeting coming up, a check-in with the shelter, but that's kind of where we are right now. The, the, as Miriam said, the thing that we are watching is that transportation, but we've had several calls with the state and that's going to be an emergency reimbursement, a dollar for dollar amount of what we're spending for students that are, have left and are trying to just finish out the school year. So that's the update on the shelter. Any questions or? All right, last, just an update on my goals, and I'll try to go through this, all of the information in your packets. So as Lisa said, I usually update the committee on my goals and you are required to evaluate me on two things. One, progress towards goals and then performance under the four main categories of the superintendent rubric. So I had five goals this past year. They were two-year goals. We've actually touched on some of them through different presentations tonight, so I'll try to expedite. But the first was to do a comprehensive review of the district tech, technology program. I outlined earlier the goals around that. What I tried to do, just to make it easier to read, is things that are complete are in green, things that are in progress are in yellow, things that we haven't cut to are in red. As I mentioned before, we delayed this goal. Originally, we were going to start in 20, 2023, 24. All of our curriculum steering committees are two years, but we had so many people on the ELA committee that we couldn't recruit enough people to serve, so we delayed it a year. But I think, given that, we effectively accomplished what we expected to in the first year of the tech steering committee. We have, we built the committee. We, we worked at reviewing current research around screen time. We've started to delve into the research around AI. We did a staff survey and a parent survey. We've started the gap analysis to look at the curriculum as well as to gather information from neighboring communities. We presented to you the guidelines for screen time today. Next year, we're going to focus on the policy for AI and the communication, district comprehensive communication plan. So I expect that we will be providing those things to you in spring 2026 instead of 2025 because we started this goal a year late. We are going to be working on the job descriptions for tech teams this, members this summer. Again, with the restructure of the business office and your just approval of a new position, we need to really shift and relook at responsibilities. So I thought, I think it makes more sense to do that over the course of the summer. There's links to evidence of goal attainment, so you can see the guidelines presented tonight. Survey results, happy to share with you upon request if you wanted to come in and take a look at any of these things. And we will be presenting the updated job descriptions for your approval in August, once we've had a chance to look at those. The second goal was around the safe school and learning environment. So this was around looking at student approaches to student discipline, implementation of the PBIS programs. And then we also need to look at and do a comprehensive review, curriculum review of our SEL programs. We've divided this, so as I presented when we talked about the district baseline and benchmark report, the, we've had very good results from the implementation of the Falcons to Falcons program. You saw a dramatic decline in discipline rates. That's been going really well. The SEL program, the Open Circle and Second Step, we do need to do a review. However, we've got teachers implementing a new ELA program and a new math program right on its tail. So what we ended up doing, or what I ended up doing, is we're going to look at the SEL programs next year. A lot of the standards in the new health frameworks fold into our, or part of, align better with our SEL program. So what we did was reverse and we really looked at the health, nutrition standards, physical, physical activity standards. We did that part of the review this year because those teachers aren't impacted by the other curriculum changes. So the SEL program we'll look at next year. So you can see some of the things in red are things that we're delaying until next year. At the end of this, I added the additional goal of what we did this year with the, the first part of the health, comprehensive health framework. Again, let's see, goal three was updating all the district emergency response plans and protocols. Those items are all primarily complete. One thing that we have to do, and we have a change, we have a new facilities director, but we are going to do the infrastructure review with an outside consultant to see if we want to look at any potential upgrades. We're really in good shape with that when we did the first round. We have containment areas at both schools. We have reinforced glass. We have security cameras, so we've updated a lot of it. But I do want to onboard the new facilities director and, and we also have a new police chief coming in, so we'll work with them. Four, goal four was around the demographic and feasibility study for the building expansion project. That is all complete. We had multiple community forums as well as presentations at the select board and senior center. As you know, the election didn't go our way. So in addition to completing the goal as projected, we also, I also worked on submitting, preparing and submitting an application to MSBA and next steps for the district in terms of building a new committee. So I have links to all of that information if you are interested, but that goal is complete. Student learning goal, we are working on, and some of the data is not yet available. So as you know, we don't have MCAS data yet for the fall, but we will provide that when it comes in. But we are working on trying But we are working on trying to close achievement gaps in ELA between, we want to see an overall improvement of 4% for all of our students, and we also want to close and narrow the gap between our general education students and students with learning disabilities that impact English, language, arts, and writing. So you can see updated notes on each of these action steps. We are going to be looking more closely at alignment of some of our specialized resources. Our special ed teachers this year have been using a lot of the program research from HMH to see what is working well and where we might need to supplement, so we've given them time to explore the new program before we start looking at where we might need to supplement our change. So that'll be in the fall, and we'll continue to work on that. We presented the baseline and benchmark report, so you can kind of see the progress over the first year of this plan, and then as soon as the data is available, I will provide that. And you can see, again, at the end, because I reshaped the goal around the SEL program, and we decided to focus on the first component of the health, I just gave you an update of where we are with the regional health review. Happy to answer any questions. Additionally, I will send you, I thought I shared it, but I will send you the evidence around the rubric standards and things that I've been working on within each of the domains, and happy to meet with anybody individually if you have questions, happy to answer any questions you might have now. But I know you've been, you might be on information overload, so again, happy to talk further in August or meet with anybody who has individual questions.
Great, thank you. Moving on to committee reports, policy, subcommittee, we have not met. Anything from budget?
We covered it.
Building committee?
We continue to wait.
King Philip?
We did have the first, or I had my first King Philip school committee meeting last night. It was mostly reorganizing, closing out the year, a lot of great awards and recognition. The two things that I had on my list to highlight, Ingrid, you highlighted during, no, in a good way, there was just a lot of appreciation expressed to the elementary schools and administrators for facilitating the seniors to come through, and I think that was really meaningful, both for, obviously for our younger kids, but also for the older kids as well. And they did graduate, and it looked like it was a great time. And also, I was really, I appreciated the presentation of the sixth grade teachers going up and working with the middle school to figure out how they can better align things going forward, so that was really interesting.
Great. Thank you. All right, CPAC. I met with Mike and Kayla, who are the co-chairs of the CPAC. We have Zoom calls set up about a week prior to each of our school committee meetings for the next year. Yeah, so I'm looking forward to talking with them once a month and reporting back and letting them know what we are doing. Their next big event is a trunk or treat that was approved tonight. We did talk about the success of the Unified Field Day. They're hoping to continue it next year. They mentioned that next year, we might have to look into some fundraising to continue that, and they are onboard and ready to help with that. They did mention that they are looking to get more parents involved. Their current board has been in place for quite some time, so their kids are all getting older, and it is such a great organization, so they are looking for interested parents, anyone who wants to join.
PTO, I have an update. I just have to be able to see it. The PTO has been busy supporting lots and lots of year-end activities that have included multiple field days. I know sixth grade field day is still
Friday.
Coming up, big day. Sixth grade promotion and related activities and teacher and staff appreciation events. They successfully completed their book fair fundraiser last week, which is always a fun way to close out the year, and the Color Fun Run will be next week, so hoping it is a not rainy day for that. And there will also be some information and festivities there in recognition and to honor Juneteenth, which I believe it falls on Juneteenth, the Color Fun Run. I was asked to communicate that there are some open slots for kind of board and leadership positions next year with the PTO. I know a number of folks have been in leadership there for quite some time, and I think they're looking to bring in more individuals who might be interested, and they are busy reviewing end-of-year numbers and fundraising efforts to determine what their additional capacity for curriculum enhancements might be, including things like possibly Scholastic News or some tech enhancements or add-ons that may have been cut from the upcoming school year's budget. So I think they're looking to creatively use the funds that they have so successfully raised this year, and that is it.
I don't have any updates.
I gave updates on Lyons last time, but Saturday is Community Day for Norfolk. It's their big shindig to kick off summer, and we also have town fireworks.
Hopefully, the weather cooperates.
Gentle reminder.
Hopefully, the weather works out.
Yeah, hopefully.
Great. Moving on to new items, we do have one partnership renewal application to vote on, and this is from the PTO. All year, we have been hearing about their donations and all the work they do to enhance the education of our students. They provide funding for our schools to enhance the education experience, funding curriculum enhancements, and they hold a grant process twice a year where teachers can request items for the classroom. They provide scholarships for Camp Burgess. Through school donations, they funded sensory walks, literacy, technology subscriptions, Authors Weeks, bullying prevention course, field days, heritage nights, sixth grade promotion activities, books, classroom supplies, the list goes on. They will hold, they put in your packet, you can review various fundraisers that they want to host next year, including the book fair, the friend directory, Spirit Sayers, where a fall fun run, movie events, business sponsorship drives, and the list just goes on. They are very, very fortunate to have such an active PTO, and thank them for all their efforts, so I would be looking for a motion to approve their application for partnership renewal.
I move to approve the Norfolk PTO's application for partnership renewal.
Second.
Further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the minutes from May 20th are also in your packet. Does anyone have any updates or comments to them? I'd be looking for a motion for the approval of the minutes from May 20th.
So moved.
Discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next school committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 19th. That still work for everyone?
I think I'm away, but I think I said that last time.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then one last thing. This has been, it's our last meeting of the school year. It has been an interesting, challenging, productive, rewarding, all the adjectives year. I just wanted to send a note to all staff, just thanking them for their efforts this year on behalf of the school committee, if everyone's comfortable with that.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.